Come with us tonight. Ms. Kay is a fifth grade teacher. Mr. Kelkhorst is a fifth grade teacher. We have Mrs. Ennis and Mrs. McLaughlin who run our news crew, and you're going to hear a little bit about that tonight. And Mr. Maynard, our assistant principal, is here. But really, the star of the show are our kids, and we want to get to them so you can see them.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. Our fifth grade students have been learning in math about how to find the volume of rectangular shapes. And one of the most challenging things about that can be that when you have to find the volume of a shape that has multiple rectangles, trying to do that and find the volume of a 3D shape on a 2D medium can be very difficult. So what we decided to do was create sort of a cross-curricular project where the students were able to involve their measurement skills, their math skills, their designing, their engineering, their creativity, their communication, pretty much ran the gamut. And they created these lovely creatures that you see hanging up here, sitting over there. That alligator won't bite you unless you get too close. So they are going to tell you a little bit about that process tonight. So I know you would much rather hear from them than me. So here we have our lovely fifth graders.
Hi, my name is Liam Dennehy. And we learned in class that you can get the volume of rectangular prisms by using the formula length times width times height. For 3D projects, we measure with cubic units. We also learned that composite volume is splitting them in half and using length times width times height to get the volume of the rectangular prisms combined. Composite volume can be challenging when you're trying to split the figure apart in 2D, so we decided to do a 3D project. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Declan Hoy. We had to be sorted into groups, and we had to look at the boxes we were, we could work with. We finally decided on which 3D animal we would make. Working as a team was really fun, and we were really able to compromise. When you work as a team, you have to listen to everyone's ideas. We tried a lot of ideas before we got a good one that worked and looked really good. You have to do, you have to make a good decision there. The compromising was amazing, and it paid off in the end. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Avolina Barasa. To choose the right boxes for our animal, we had to work together and agree on which boxes would work for each body part. To find the volume, we measured each box in some meters length within height. Finally, we added the volumes together to get the volume of the whole animal. Thank you.
Once you're done finding the measurements, you use them to find how much paper you will need. Then you wrap it with tape or glue. If your animal was more than one box, you would put them together. Now it's time to do the fun things, to make your animal unique. It depends what animal you're making. If you made a bee, you would make a stinger, antennas, wings, and a crown. Or if you did a pig, you would make a snout, ears, and a tail. You would do it the same with every animal, just different features. As you can see, we have some around the room and some on the screen. Thank you for your time.
We have one more group of kids that would like to talk to you, and that is our Conley School News Crew. So Mr. Kelkhorst is going to tell you a little bit about that program.
All right, thank you again so much for having us. We love to talk about all of the fun, engaging, and memorable activities that we get to do at the Conley School. So now we're going to talk about the Conley School News Crew. We have three responsible and eager students who are going to be sharing all about the ins and outs of this opportunity that the fifth grade students at Conley have. It's an annual opportunity, and it's a pretty big deal. The kids do a lot of work for this. So in fourth grade, they apply. They have to do an interview. They have a code of conduct. There's a lot of moving parts to it. And honestly, all of the moving parts would not be possible without Mrs. McLaughlin and Mrs. Ennis. So I do want to give a shout out to them for all they do. And they also film a lot of our school events that get posted on the Whitman Hansen Community Access Channel. So thank you very much to them. The News Crew is honestly really, really great because we get to see a lot of the kids involved in many ways, whether they're on the News Crew, behind the scenes, or whether they're a news anchor. So that's enough for me. I would love to have three kids come in. So they are Jamison Ellis, Emily McLaughlin, and Tegan Stan.
Hello, my name is Jamison Ellis, and I'm a fifth grader at Conley School. We are here today to tell you about our Morning News Program. Morning News is a fifth grade program. If you are interested, you have to fill out an application. You need to have two teacher recommendations. Next step is an interview with Ms. Downey, Mr. Maynard. Over 60 students applied this year, and only half of them were chosen to have an interview. We are here, we are given a time for our interview, and it's very important to be on time. Some of the questions we were asked were, are you responsible enough for this job? And why do you think you are good for this job? I know I was very nervous. Once the crew members are chosen, we receive a letter welcoming us to the crew. I was so happy to be chosen. Being a part of the News Crew is a really cool way to have fun and be able to show others that I'm kind, respectful, and responsible. Thank you.
Hello, I am Emily McLaughlin, and I'm also a fifth grader at Conley School. We have already started our training for News Crew, and we have learned on the jobs. We have three crews, and each crew has five members. So only 15 students got chosen for News Crew. We each have a job that will change each week. Once we learn all the jobs, it will change every day. Some of the jobs we have are being the camera operator, working the soundboard. We have a director, and someone's responsible for setting up the set. We also have a producer who will go to the classrooms and get the on-air anchors. We practice a couple of times to make sure the on-air anchors are comfortable, and then we go live. This is a great way to get important announcements to school, like if lunch changed or if we have a half-day coming up or if there's a club meeting after school. I love being a part of News Crew because it teaches me responsibility, and the younger kid, younger students look up to us. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Tegan Stan, also a fifth grader from Conley School. Once we are chosen for News Crew, we have an orientation with Ms. Downey, Mr. Maynard, Ms. McLaughlin, and Ms. Ennis. Being part of News, of the News Crew is teaching us a lot of responsibility because the equipment is expensive, and we have to be careful with it. The microphones are very delicate, and we are, we are also learning to handle all the equipment with care. It is also teaching us how important it is to be on time. Morning News is how most classes start the day. We start the day with the Pledgeable Agents and our Conley School pledge. We are also learning about being flexible and patient. Sometimes we have technical difficulties. Sometimes people make mistakes. And we know that is okay and just part of putting together a news program. I was excited to be a member of the News Crew this year because I looked up to News Crew from past years, and I love when the little kids look up to us.
We also have a YouTube channel, and we would love it if you would like and subscribe. You can see what we're up to at Conley School.
So News Crew's a big deal. You can see that we're doing some fun, engaging activities. Thank you so much for having us, but really, can we give another round of applause?
Thank you so much for participating. Whichever group did the giraffe, any of my former students know that's my favorite animal. Yeah, so. Thank you. We're just so happy that you could make it. I know it's the beginning of the year, and there's, you know, a lot of stuff just starting. So you guys volunteering to come first was great. Thank you very much for telling us what you do and all the hard work that you're putting into school. And we thank you very much.
Thanks, folks. Thanks.
Okay, next, we have another new group, and that is our Student Advisory Council from the high school. And they're going to speak up nice and loudly with their names and.
Chair. If I may, I have an introduction.
Absolutely, please.
I'd like to welcome the Student Advisory Committee, and thank you to my colleagues on the school committee for appointing me as the outreach coordinator to the committee. It is my responsibility to regularly inform the students of the upcoming agenda. From there, these students will seek feedback from students in the district and formulate their input. Since 1987, young leaders have been representing their fellow students before Massachusetts School Committees. While the practice of meeting every other month with the Student Advisory Committee has been less faithfully observed throughout the Commonwealth, it is common practice for one or more students to have a regular place at the meeting table. Students will bring news and updates, issues of concern, and often their own views on matters before the school committee or to the public at large. The appropriate role of a student school committee member is this. The law makes that person a member of the school committee with the right to speak, but without the right to vote. Student representatives have been invaluable and knowledgeable contributors, participating in powerful discussions during school committee sessions. Many have had a great impact on decisions, altering outcomes with persuasive arguments, influencing the creation perhaps of district policy, helping set budget priorities, and representing student colleagues with distinction. Within the norms and policies of the school committee, student members may speak as they wish and share ideas, subject to best judgment. What student members say, how long they take to say it, and the tone they use are up to them, all of which will determine how effective they will be. They are looking, these students this evening are looking forward to possibly staying throughout the duration of the meeting as long as their individual schedules allow. And I know there are several agenda items that are of interest to them in hearing about. One of them is even the vote for the field trip to Greece tonight. So I will now turn it over and introduce the student-elected representative is Kayla, excuse me, Kayla Dawson. And then we have Gianna Ruggero, Maddie Morris, Riley Marshall, and Amanda McKee. Oh, and I should say, they're going to give their own introductions, and they've already prepared their goals. So we met next, last week, and they already had goals formulated because three of you can speak to this, but they were on the Student Advisory Committee last year.
All right, thank you guys so much for having us today. We really appreciate you guys listening to us and valuing, valuing our time as well. I'm Kayla Dawson. I was chose as the student representative, and I'm a returning member of the School Advisory Council. I was on Best, or I've been a part of Best Buddies since freshman year. This year, I'm social media coordinator. We actually had our first meeting today, and it went great. I also, along with Best Buddies and a part of the Unified Track, we won sectionals this year, and I even went to states, which we didn't do so well, but it was fun for the experience. I'm also a member of Key Club, Premed Club, and Red Cross. And I also do club volleyball as well as dance on the side whenever I have time. So this up is Gianna.
Hi, everyone. I'm Gianna Ruggero. I'm also a returning member for the school advisory. Some of the smaller clubs I'm part of is Math Honor Society. I'm one of three sophomores in it. I'm a mentor, peer mentor. I volunteer at Dollars for Scholars, ASL, and Active Minds, where there's a few things I put most of my time to. I've been on the competitive dance team since second grade, and this year I am also on varsity volleyball as well as club volleyball. I am the vice president of Best Buddies and also the president of Key Club. I was so grateful to be elected for this position. I'm hoping to get a lot done this year. I already have my sandwich-making dates for the next four months planned out. Right now, we're planning around Christmas time to donate 20 backpacks of gifts, whatever kids need around Christmas time, to 20 families. So I'm excited for that this year. I'm also part of MASAR. I applied last year, which is the Massachusetts Association of Student Representatives. I am more online, so I do a lot of outreach, but I've reached out to over 15 schools and superintendents telling them to join MASAR, sending out applications. And right now, we also attend, I attend Zooms. I was invited into Boston to go once. I was not able to attend. But our goal in our main bill right now we're trying to pass is that financial literacy should be mandatory to graduate so that for all schools, which we have here already, but that is what the group of the MASAR kids are working on. And then lastly, I'm also in DECA. I competed last year in Business Finance at Regionals. I got first place, so I qualified for states. Sadly, I didn't do too good there, but I'm hoping this year I may get a bit further. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Madeline, or Maddie Morris, and this is my second year on Student Advisory. I'm a part of many clubs here at the high school. I'm a part of ASL, The What Magazine, Best Buddies, but most notably, I'm president of the Red Cross Club. In this club, we organize an annual blood drive at high school. So once a year, we have everyone come donate blood if you're eligible. We do CPR training for free, so you don't have to pay any fee. You just come, you take a lesson. Next week, if our fundraiser gets passed, we will be raising money for Hurricane Helene and Hurricane Milton. We have ribbons that are being made this weekend, and they'll be for sale next week. Tomorrow, we are making cards for kids with cancer, and we'll be sending them out to hospitals. I'm also part of varsity tennis and have been for the past three years. I'm included in Dollars for Scholars. And outside of school, I have more than 90 hours community service through an organization called Susan G. Komen. This organization raises money to find a cure for breast cancer. And individually, I've raised more than $3,000 for this organization. I love to volunteer, and I'm so excited to be a part of the Student Advisory this year.
Hi, my name's Riley Marshall. I'm a junior at Whitman Hansen, and this is my first year on Student Advisory Council. I've been playing varsity soccer since my freshman year, and I'm also a part of a lot of clubs, such as Active Minds, Red Cross Club, Premed Club, Best Buddies, and Key Club. And I've played lacrosse and ran winter track as well. And I'm looking forward to doing Unified Track this spring.
Hi, I'm Amanda McKee. I'm a junior here. I'm the vice president of our class where we hold fundraisers, and we plan proms, which I'm super excited to plan. We're already getting into all the details of that, and it's a lot of fun with the whole group of us. I've played varsity basketball since freshman year. It's something that I'm super passionate about. I play club, or I play AAU basketball. I play all year round, and it's just something that I enjoy a lot and I put a lot of time into. I'm also the president of Debate Club. I started it back up this year after it hasn't been running for two years. And we're all about getting the education that we need to make, like, decisions about current events and everything like that. And that's something that I'm very excited to get going on in the school. I'm also a part of Active Minds, Unified Track, Best Buddies, and Key Club. And I love being a part of all of that kind of stuff. Thank you.
All right, so we have packets for you guys, and this is just an outline of our goals for this year. This is very much just like skeleton ideas of what we're looking to do. So you guys can flip through the packets or go along with us as we share some of our ideas and goals for this year.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
Sorry, one second. We're short our packet. We're going back to the printer now.
So if you flip to the fourth page, our first goal is clean and green to reduce the amount of trash around the school. Part of more of what I wanted to do in Key Club, too, I decided to take a walk around the school and specifically up the junior path, and never realized how much trash was currently around the school. And to me, that's something that shows, like, you want a school to look good. It feels good. So we have a plan to just have a school cleanup day where students can choose to collect trash, which will also be a community service option. The bottles collected, we're also planning on donating. We don't really know where yet. We have a couple places in mind. And not only will the school look and feel better, but it's a way to bring the students together for one day. And a way to fix this is that there is one single trash barrel at the top of the junior path, not all the way down and not on the way to the tennis courts. So we would like to eventually implement another trash barrel or more throughout the school. And also in terms of the way our school looks inside, obviously, it's a very nice school, but we realize certain hallways or bathrooms, like the downstairs bathroom is extremely decorated, but once you go upstairs, it doesn't have those designs or poems or anything. So we think just like uplifting it a bit more. As well as the hallway down at the CAF, it feels so like bright and filled with student artwork, and more hallways could be like that, too. So we hope to just make the school look a bit nicer for our students. Thank you.
All right. And another thing that we're working on this year is being better about our social media outreach. So last year, we made our Instagram. While we didn't have many followers, this year, we're looking to promote our social media more. So there's a QR code posted on this slide. So if you guys want to scan it and follow it, you guys can follow along where we're going to post updates about what we're doing along in our community. We also understand that social media is very important for kids as most kids scroll on Instagram more than they scroll through their email inbox. So this is a good way to get not only kids involved, but also their parents as well, as the parents can see what the students are doing around their school and to get the kids involved. Like Gianna said, when we do our school cleanup, we'll post stuff on there. As well as if we want to get information from students directly, you could post Instagram polls or have people swipe up and give information of what they would like to see around the school. Because maybe if they feel like they can have their voice, we can get thoughts that we might not have thought of on our own.
One of our biggest goals this year is to get more feedback from our student body on specific aspects of our school and how we can improve. The high school experienced a major change, schedule change this year, and we want to get feedback on that and like if there's any minor flaws or anything that we can like help solve. And also, two years ago, there was a change from having late starts every other week to having Panther releases. And half of our school have had, like have experienced having late starts, while the underclassmen haven't had that. So we wanted to send out a survey to see if anyone would be, if anyone would want to bring late starts back and see people's views on Panther release first, late starts.
Okay, our next goal, if you flip, is the suggestion locker. So in our school, Mr. Moriarty runs the suggestion locker. But last year, I know that they talked to him. He was willing to give it up because he didn't, he kind of has sarcastic comments back or like, we want to be the people that, if someone has a good idea of a way to improve the school, we want to go talk to those people that will be able to fix it or get an idea going. And taking over the suggestion locker would help that because we may be more students. If they're too afraid, or not too afraid, but reaching out social media or through Instagram or like email is hard because you have your name attached to it. If someone would want to put something in the suggestion locker, and we see it, we'll act on it. That's one of our main goals.
Another idea we had was to make the courtyard more accessible. I don't know if you've ever seen it, but right across from the nurse, there's a little walk-through to cut through both sides of the school. It's a little outdoor walk-through. It's so beautiful. There's tables and chairs so you can go sit out. It's really green. It's nice greenery, but you can't use it. There's no time in the day for you to go outside and use it. You are allowed to pass through during passing periods, but you have almost three minutes to do that. And we want to be, make it more accessible so that if you want to go out there during lunch or win or seminar, that you have that option to sign up and go outside. Because I know the cafeteria, there's maybe more than 100 students in there. And if you want somewhere to do something quiet or just to do your work, it can get chaotic. And I mean, I think everyone loves to be outside. It's such a beautiful place. And we are hoping that this year we can try to find a way, maybe by like a virtual QR code where you can sign up and have a limit, obviously, but just have it accessible for that students who want to can. And that is all we have. Does anyone have?
All right. Does anybody have any questions on any ideas that we have brought up or any other things that you want to bring to our attention that we can look into from like a student standpoint?
Well, Steve?
Well, you have a lot of ideas, Steve. You're going to have to get a bigger plate. Because you've got to walk on the end. Thanks to all five of you, and I know it goes even further than that with the support mechanisms you have in place. I really have no question, but I just wanted to wish you luck. I've said it before to your group, we're always here if you need support. You know, we're virtual, too. We're up there in the world. We're doing whatever, whatever I like to have. And obviously, Chairman Superintendent can get ahold of us. I do want to wish you the best of luck. And thank you so much.
Thank you.
Rosemary?
Yes, thank you. I actually had a question because I think a family friend is also in another town on this board. They have one student at the table with us. Is, is that something?
Yes.
Is, is that something that we're?
Yes.
Yeah, Kayla will be that person at the table going forward. Yeah, this is introductions tonight, right?
Yep. Um, next meeting, I'll be attending the whole meeting and I'll be sitting at the table up with you guys. So I'll definitely be there.
Good. That's great. Well, I thank you for volunteering to do this. You know, we all volunteer. We're volunteers here too. And got elected, we have to get elected, so we, we know how difficult that is too. But you have a lot of ideas here. Yeah, I hope you can work them out and they are great. I'd like to see some of those and we'll be hearing updates, I'm sure, as you go forward. Um, but again, we appreciate you taking the time to do this work. And don't forget, you have to do the elementaries and the middle school too. So you have a lot of responsibility, not just the high school.
Yes, Steph, you're up for it.
There you go. Nice to hear. Very good.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we have the approval of meeting minutes from September 11th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Motion will approve the minutes. No second law.
Okay. Any additions, omissions, deletions? None? Okay, hearing none. We will vote, please. All those in favor, raise your hands. Okay. Any abstention?
I'm abstaining.
You're gonna abstain? Okay, one abstention. Okay, boss, your turn.
Um, next piece on the agenda, I, we have two VIPs hiding way in the back. Chief Mike Mix and Deputy Chief, uh, Mike Casey from the Hanson Police Department. Uh, every year at the beginning of the school year, we gather as a team to talk about school safety and introduce new staff to our public safety officials. The four chiefs, their deputies, and whomever else wants to attend that meeting. As we went into this meeting, uh, Hanson's police officers will be wearing a new piece of equipment and have been since I think almost a month already, um, as far as body cameras. Uh, since this is a, a, a change to our MOU, um, with our SROs in the building, I asked both Mikes to come in and speak upon this because I think there could be a lot of misinformation if it doesn't come right from the, from the folks that are having their officers wear these devices uh, for the safety of themselves and for the safety of the public. So I've invited them here. They've given you a, a synopsis of what their policy is. I've also included in your packet our current MOU and the job description of the SRO. Just want to say that we work really well collaboratively with both towns and public safety to make sure all our students are safe and staff are safe. But I think hearing this new information from uh, the folks that are presenting it would be uh, best for you.
Just as, um, Jeff, just so I wouldn't clarify because I think that sometimes people get caught up confused with the acronyms if they're not in this world all the time. So MOU would be their memory and bring in their contract with us.
Correct.
And then SR would be the school resource.
Correct. Gentlemen?
Thank you, thank you for having me. I'm Mike Mix, I'm the police chief. Deputy Chief Mike Casey. Again, thank you for having us. We, let me give you a brief overview of how we got to where we are today. Back in 2020, the, uh, after the unrest from the George Floyd incident, Massachusetts passed a police reform act. Many of the things in that act were actually things that I've been in police chiefs since 2010 that police chiefs in Massachusetts were pushing for. And what we wanted to come out of that was to help improve policing in Massachusetts and uh, give officers more tools, better equipment and better training to do the job. I, I had the uh, the honor to actually be a, a member of the FBI Academy, trained at the FBI Academy back in 2010. And I was with not only officers from the United States, but international officers. And when you got to learn the different policing methods, uh, I can say that officers in Massachusetts are probably some of the most well-educated, most well-behaved. Although we all see the news at times where no, no career is perfect. But it, it amazed me, the different levels of policing across the United States. The Northeast is very unique. When you look at the New England states and New York as to how we handle policing versus other parts of the country. That being said, there's always room for improvement and it's always good to have self-reflection. Going back to the reform law, one of the things that came out of that was a push for body cams, body cameras. And uh, a lot of police initially, myself included, were a little skeptical of it. You know, why, why do I need a camera on me? Would, you know, why can't you just believe me? You're supposed to. But funny things happened since I've started talking to some of the other departments and even I think my own officers will agree with me at this point. They're actually a great tool. One of the, one of the things that really hit me, cause I work at Gillette, we all have outside jobs, so to speak, working details. Working at one of the Patriots games, actually it was one of the concerts, I'm sorry, the summer. One of the officers I was working with had a body cam on. And we were discussing, you know, the pros and cons to it. One of the things he said was that he noticed and his officers noticed, he said, it's amazing that some of the foolishness that we deal with, the people yelling at us, not cooperating, not behaving. Goes, when you tell them, hey, I'm recording this, their attitudes change and they tend to behave. It's actually, it's actually a de-escalation technique now. It's great. So again, that's kinda as a, as a whole, where the state's going to. There's more and more towns uh, that are adopting them as we get funding, as we get grants. We're gonna have them for at least the next five years because that's what town meeting approved and that's the contract I had to sign with Motorola. So one way or another, I got them for five more years. As far as we go, this has been a two-year process between researching the cameras, working on a, a contract with Motorola, working through the state bid system, and then actually implementing the cameras. We did a pilot program starting the summer with the sergeants. They wore them for a little over a month. Wanted to make sure that the supervisors were comfortable, knew how to use them. It also gave us time uh, to work with the video to try to see what can we edit? What does it pick up? How exactly are these working? What can I release? What can I not release? We then issued them to the officers uh, mid-September. Superintendent, after that meeting, as he discussed earlier, we had some concerns. I have not had the SRO utilizing him in the school until at Jeff's request that we come in and discuss it with you and address any concerns or questions you have. The rest of the officers are wearing it. They've been here. If they've come in for calls, they have them on. They've worked the football games, they have to have them on. So any calls you get out in the street, unless it's myself, the detective or uh, maybe the deputy, you're gonna have an officer with a camera on. The way that they work, I'm actually gonna have the deputy go through the camera itself on, and some of its features.
Uh, good evening. Thank you for having us. And I appreciate you giving us this opportunity to come in here and just discuss any concerns that you may have. And we're here to alleviate that situation. And I know the chief mentioned a bunch of broad uh, variations of where we've gotten and how we've gone to here. And I, I can't concur more than the superintendent, we have an amazing relationship, work together. And we obviously want to continue with that and go forward. The camera isn't actually always on. Okay? It's, this tool is, is meant for the protection of the staff, students, the public and the officer. This camera is, it sticks to a, a center, a center viewing and it's peripheral. And it allows us to capture when it is activated, the audio and the video. And then you may have some questions of when and when they're on. So and I, maybe I won't get ahead of myself. But the camera isn't always on. But I will just say this, and I'm sure I'll repeat it several times. The camera is always on when there is a police action taken. And so no other reason there, never are we going to diminish or replace officers discretion. Never are we going to have this camera interfere with the common interaction that we'll have with the public, staff, students. A lot of variables that may be a contributing factor to having it on also coming to that same decision-making to have it on. So if, continue to be spinning here, I can just open up to questions and I'll be more than happy to answer any and all.
Eric?
Go ahead.
Glenn had his hand up. Do you want me to go first?
Yeah, go ahead. Glenn.
I actually had a couple of questions though. Um, so first of all, um, as an editor here, I'm very grateful for the role that school resource officers play in our buildings, especially in the climate that we're in. And um, I think that's, you know, so, so important as part of the community in our school. I'm wondering a little bit about a couple of different things. So my first question is, is this Hanson, is from a within side, is this like cross the district or is this just Hanson at this point?
It's just Hanson. That would mean the, the SRO assigned to the high school is a Hanson officer.
Um, my other, my other big question, I guess, has to do, and I appreciate the fact that it's not always on. When we talk about um, student privacy and civil rights, especially for some of our students who are on IEPs or Bible course, who potentially could be the ones that have um, um, more challenging interaction based on behaviors or whatever, um, how do we kind of manage to navigate that because they're minors?
So under our policy, and the camera, this is how it works. The camera's buffering. There's a, when it's off, there's a 30-second cycle. It's capturing only the video, not the audio of ongoing. But then every 30 seconds is replaced or every second is replaced by 30 more seconds of video. When it's activated, and that's what's pertaining to us in a police response, is when you will hear the audio and the video recording. Now, when that gets activated, which it has mechanism to be muted, uh, by being in place, holding. But that 30 seconds prior, previously from turning it on is now being seen. But it's not relevant to the case because, well, the incident, because we haven't activated. Now, being uh, pervy to these circumstances and cognizant of certain elements that are required here, we, we don't, we're not going to have the cameras on during medical responses, during interaction with students that may have uh, difficulty understanding the circumstances. Like there is, there's a broad ban of discretion that our officers will continue to use. This camera is going to be activated when it's a requirement of the police response, when we're fact-finding, where we're in an investigatory manner, when we have a situation. And there may be a situation where the officer has to act so quickly, he inadvertently doesn't realize he has turned the camera on yet. And it may then be activated in the middle of an incident. Like it, it, it's quite broad, but we are going to use our discretion. And in our policy with medical responses, we're quite cognizant of the privacy and we don't want them on. We're not, they're, they're not on during those responses also, if that helps answer your question. But again, the 30-second buffering, I think is what the great concern may be. Uh, you know, asking people, what's that mean? Is it always on? No, when it's off, it is cycling every 30 seconds. But it's just capturing the video concept of when you hit power, that's when you'll get the audio also. And that's when the recordings begin.
Glenn?
I got a few random. The 30 seconds, is that, is that, does that go to a cloud? Is that stored permanently or just every 30 seconds you lose it?
Every 30 seconds you lose it.
You stop it. Okay, you have 30 seconds to jump back.
But what you won't lose is once that video camera is activated.
Yep.
That 30 seconds prior.
Grab that.
That is going to be saved.
Good, okay. And um, it's officer discretion to activate it?
Yes. Under the policy, there are certain times when you must. We're responding to an accident, we're, we're responding to a police manner, it's on. When the lights go on, the camera.
Right, I know that with the dash camera, lights go on.
When you're in public and you're involved in a, in a police response, whatever it may be, it's on.
Right. Are there any? Sorry. Is there only you can turn it on? Is there any automatic trigger? Could you, you have access to it? No? Okay, so it's your discretion. And what was, there was one more I had, but I can't remember. Oh, no, yes, I remember. Can I?
Yes, you may.
Thank you very much. Um, what is the state law about you, about cameras in school? Like is, what's the downside of having it besides what she said?
We, we have video, we have video, we have video right now. We have zero, we have no audio.
Okay. Can you have audio?
We have, I, I have never explored that.
There's no law.
I, I don't, I don't know. We have never explored that because finances wouldn't allow that. And possibly, you know what I mean?
Territory.
So we, most schools, most public buildings now have video surveillance.
Hillary?
I'm done.
So to. I'm sorry, Chair.
She was next.
I was gonna do a follow-up if, if you don't.
Oh, go ahead.
Chair. So as far as audio goes and recording the state.
Yep.
You could have audio in the hallways if you wanted to. You just need to post it. You have to make people known. Massachusetts is a, is a two, if you call it a two-party state. So in, in a public area, there's no need to notify anybody. Our policy and a best practice is to tell people, you're being recorded, if we can. Uh, I just wanted to clarify something too.
Is this considered public or private?
In, in public.
It's, in the school, is that considered public?
Parts of the school, yeah, parts of the school would be considered public.
It's no different?
No, and, and look, the school resource officer's trained. He, he's very conscientious. If he's in the guidance, talking about an issue with a student's, you know, family or, or behavioral issues, he's not gonna have it on.
No.
Uh, in that, if you give us a minute, I did bring a clip of a car stop that one of our officers did. So you can see the 30-second buffer. You can see some of the abilities we have for blurring faces, for, for uh, taking out audio. But going back, I'm sorry, man, to your question, just one thing on the, on the behavioral stuff and on medical. The only, the officers have some discretion to turn on um, their, their video during medicals. And, and basically what we've been trying to train them to is two things. One, if the medical is involved with a crime, it's going on. Obviously, if there was assault and battery and somebody's hurt badly, it's going on. None of that is gonna go out to the public though, because there's privacy issues with medical. It's not a public record. As far as, well, in, in, in a juveniles, as a policy, we do not release anything on juveniles. The other thing though is, is the other medical thing that I'm concerned, I was concerned about and we've discussed with Derek and the other officers, is on medicals, the officers do not have to have it on. So if they're going for a wellbeing check, let's say, whether it's in the school or in the street, uh, somebody's having some type of uh, mental health issue, they don't have to have it on. What we're training them to do is if they think this is going to go bad, if they think that there's gonna be a use of force, something uh, or there's gonna be some type of violent actions going on, they're to turn those on. And that's for both the officer's safety and that person's safety. We want to make sure that the officer acted appropriately and uh, within reason. And if something, if they do get injured, we can then look and say, is there something wrong with our training? Do we need to improve something? I mean, we've spent more time in the past few years on mental health training than you can imagine. Sorry.
You may have just touched on it, but I just want to ask for more clarity, maybe for people watching. So um, if there hypothetically is a fight in school and the SRO is there and has to break it up or something and a kid is hurt and the family of that student and the family of other students involved wants access to the footage. I, I'm sure, I, I just, you said you can blur faces out. I don't know. I guess my, my biggest question is if someone files a Freedom of Information Act or something like that, are they allowed to obtain the footage? Or is it, you just said juvenile, so I'm thinking no, but I just.
So the, the way that, when you get into the freedom of, well, the Freedom of Information Act or the public records in Massachusetts is really what it is.
Okay.
Ultimately, I answer to the Secretary of State. My policy and, and most news outlets, legitimate news outlets, won't run juveniles. Okay? Initially, will that footage be public? No. Because if there's a crime, it then is gonna go through the court system. It's evidence. It's no different than I wouldn't run around with a, a, you know, a gun used in a robbery to show people for the most part. It's evidence. Then it falls under the court and the district attorney's abilities. The district attorney could potentially release it or the court could potentially release it. For the most part, they're not going to. The other thing uh, is we can edit it. And, and if we can play this clip, I think you'll see some of the editing. I think you'll get a better understanding of that 30-second buffering. And uh, you can see some of the, again, some of the audio that we, we could believe well. So right now, this is buffering. This is, this is just the 30-second loop, loop. Once you hear the audio, that is when the officer has activated his camera. And it's just going to then capture that 30-second previous. 30 seconds is a long time. Wait, it was hot. You'll know the audio will pick in when you see the lights up, the dash light off. Let's get a little back up to it. So the audio is definitely on now, so I can see it. It's always going.
I can hear it. We can hear it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
496 to Hanson. All plates, all information, everything is edited.
Okay.
And we have the ability to blur faces. Window down. How you doing, Officer Rode, Hanson Police Department?
Portuguese.
I don't, I don't speak Portuguese. You speak English?
No, no.
No?
This uh, is Portuguese.
Okay. You're, you're driving too fast.
Awesome.
Okay. Do you have your license? Yep, do you have your registration?
That's right.
Yeah. Okay. So you were too fast. You need to slow down, okay?
Awesome.
Just sit tight for. Way rapido?
Uh, uh, uh.
Okay. Hold tight for one sec. Make sure everything's okay, all right?
Okay.
Okay. That guy seemed a little fast.
496 to Hanson. It's gonna be on our, I'll set with the info.
Ricky?
Please just let it sweat it out a little bit. I'll sweat.
I just saw something. That's okay. No, but, you know, no problem, just slow down, okay? All right, take care. I'll do them all.
All right, Rosemary?
Yeah, I just, now, everyone's gonna have an opinion. It's the law, essentially, that we're moving in a direction. I can understand. Yeah, but in terms of, in terms of equitable services within the town, some people will view this as an additional service, while some people will view it as something negative. But will the towns essentially, and this isn't from you, if Whitman doesn't have it and Hanson does, how is that going to go across equitably? In terms of maybe parents in Hanson think it's great, or some parents in Whitman would think it was great, and then some parents in Hanson might not think it's great, and, and then Whitman gives it. It could go either way, but in turn, essentially, are we providing the same services for both channels?
Tiffany and I have talked about this.
Yeah, you did, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, not sure where it'll go, but we have been discussing that concern.
And, and I make my opinion, I agree with her.
Yeah, so just to add to that, and you spoke to this, I remember when this was voted at Springtown meeting two years ago. Um, so people, the people in Hanson know that this was happening and has been happening. Probably didn't realize it was gonna affect SROs in the schools. Um, but I, I think that would be the only thing that I'd say about that. It was voted on pretty, like, I, I don't even think there was any, any contesting of it. It was like, yep, this is what we like, thank you, okay, move the vote. Um, at time, so, I, I think that's what I would say if someone, right, would say that.
So is, just the commission, uh, you're, you're talking about the police commission, you know, commission. Is that the direction the commission's going for, for all police forces?
No, it's, it's a department preference.
It's a department preference, okay.
Mike, I'll, can I just jump in? I'll, I'll read what you sent me, is who's actively doing this locally? And who's in, is that okay with you, Mike?
Yeah, yeah.
So right now, Bridgewater, Carver, Hanson, Halifax, Hanover, Hingham, Holbrook, Lakeville, Middleborough, uh, Wareham, Weymouth, and Mass State Police are using cameras. Uh, the following towns are, are looking for funding and trying to deploy them. Rockland, East Bridgewater, Bourne, Kingston, Marion, West Bridgewater, New Bedford, and the following towns are researching or seeking funding, and that's Stuxbury and Pembroke. I had asked Mike to share with you, because Hanson isn't doing this unilaterally alone. There's other towns doing this. And the one town that's not on here is Whit, you know, and Mike and I spoke about-
And if I can say something. I've been a policeman in Hanson for 30 years. And when we have incidents or we have documentation that needs to be taken, or then we have to testify, it's, it's our, it's our interpretation, it is what we were saying, and then what we document. These, these cameras bring it to another whole level. And, and with equity and fairness, like, what you see is what you're getting. There, there isn't, there's no bias, there's no influence, there's no manipulation or modification. These cameras are showing you exactly what has transpired. And for not only the protection of the victims, the suspects, the individual, individual parties involved, staff, students, public, or, and police officers, we want that accountability. We want that transparency. This camera brings all of that. Now, a guy, 30 years, I have had been, I've had abilities to communicate somebody of what happened the night before. I've placed it all on reports and I've submitted to the courts, where we then testify towards it. You now just have to hit play. And it gives everyone the equal perception of what happened or occurred, without any other questioning of, well, that's what you think you saw. So, departments that aren't, don't have them, I can't speak for them. Now that we do have them, it is now one of the best tools. And as the chief mentioned prior, I, people wanna create a narrative. Those complaints, or even those suggestions of, I wanna speak to you about an interaction I had with an officer that I feel, those, they're not taking place any longer. How you doing, ma'am? How you doing, sir? Just wanna be, let you know that the camera is on for your, for all to be recorded, and I want you to know that it's on now. Things change. People now know. And to, but you mentioned earlier about cameras in the school. There's gotta be over 2,000 cameras in the school. You know what I'm saying? And they're out there. Now, we're not trying to control some form of narrative, but we're not also gonna put ourselves in the position, as we've seen in the past, of a 12-second snippet, or 30-second on Channel 7 of what did or may not even have occurred. These cameras are a valuable tool for everyone. And we just want you to know, it's for the protection of everyone.
Thank you. Uh, Kevin, do you, um, have any questions for the association?
No, I, not, not at the moment. I think a lot of it's going to then come in conversations as far as, you know, will the people interact with the staff? And student fight, and how would that information be used, right? Again, the transparency piece, but, uh, how does it then come into perhaps to, uh, conversations and meetings and the others? But, you know, to, to be, to be determined?
One of the things I think it's important for the committee to know is, Mass general laws have really changed policing in schools. It used to be, a couple of years back, if there was a disturbance in school, we could call the SRO, and the SRO could say, knock it off. And that's not true anymore. The SROs and police can only be involved in schools for, for violent offenses. They can take a report of vandalism, but they really can't do much in schools, and, and the law prohibits that. Uh, so it's not like, and just laying the picture out, when Derek would be walking around the building, he's not actively policing. He's in a support role to the staff. He really can't even break up fights. He can't search lockers, he can't do things, and the law prohibits that. And our SROs have specific training around that. Um, that doesn't mean they add support to us. They, they absolutely do, and they're invaluable in sometimes being a presence when situations are escalating. But that doesn't mean that kids are getting dragged out and cuffed and stuffed in a, in a cruiser, because the law prohibits that. So it's, I think it's just important for you folks to know. Again, 20 years back, lot different. 10 years back, lot different. The past five, six years, policing in schools have been really regulated by, by the legislature. Um, and I think sometimes it's helpful and sometimes it's, it's not so helpful. But the law is the law at this point.
Sorry, so just so, yeah, unless I misunderstood you. If the officer's interacting with staff on just a regular basis, it, it's not on.
Yeah.
Um, if he's interviewing staff regarding, as maybe they're a witness to a crime, it may be on. But he, he's going to announce that it's on.
You know, I had this conversation with Derek today, and he was trying to rework some scenarios, intensifying some conversations tonight. And he asked me, when he has interaction with the staff, or, you know, or a teacher or an administrator. And I'm like, yeah, that, that's not on. And he goes, well, even if there's vital information or fact-finding that they're, they're saying, we have a situation just occurred, blah, blah, blah. He's not saying, all right, well, here's the deal. Go back 34 feet, and I'm gonna go back, and then I'm gonna hit play, and this conversation will begin. That's not going to occur. He's not going to turn it on during that conversation. What may lead later on, the interaction, the fact-finding of now a, a criminal incident, the camera's going to be on, and he'll advise them. And he's gonna do his due diligence of constantly advising, may just be aware the camera's on. But if he's not advising, then it's on. If I can, if that gives any clarity.
Okay, so, um, what we need to do tonight, we can do two things, one of two things. We can either vote the change to the MOU, or we can table it till November. And if you have any questions, you can come to Jeff, um, and he can go to the chief, um, with any questions that you might have. So that's your two choices tonight, um, on what you wanna do. Yes, Dawn?
Um, because I haven't read the whole MOU in comparison, I'm just looking at the policy, which on page five, very clearly outlines the SRO and what, when they will use this. So I think that's, um, absolutely helpful. So, is that the only language that got put into the-
I, I didn't change the MOU at all.
We have changed, it's up to us to change it, so.
I wanted Mike and Mike to be able to speak to you, but that would be the language that I would change.
So that I would make a motion to modify the MOU to include the language related to the school resource officer on page five of the policy.
Second it.
Okay, Glenn, second?
Discussion.
Any, any more discussion?
Yeah, just would, would continue to be, maybe have a discussion with Whitman to have equal sort of availability before we vote it, that we were voting both police at the same time.
But that's up to the chief, it's really not up to us. So, I mean, you could have a-
We have been discussing it.
It's not my privilege to tell the police chief. I, I would just say that, you know, they, I think the chiefs have talked to each other.
Yeah. Whitman, this is totally up to Whitman. You, you have to, not to, not to sound like demanding or anything, but you have to understand something. The school is physically in Hanson. It's my responsibility. It's, as much as we work very well with Whitman and everything, it's not Whitman's responsibility. If they decide to go with body cameras, great. If they decide not to, I'm fine with that.
Again, that, that's, the issue is that you also have the elementary and the middle school in Hanson. We have elementary and middle schools in Whitman that will not be covered, whereas Hanson will. And that's, that's what she's talking about, is that's the inequality. We understand that-
73 requires that every regional school, everything is, is providing the same, I think 73, I was 72. That provides the same services without.
I'm confused, how is this a service?
That's what I'm saying. Would, would some people, would parents view it in different ways, as a positive or a negative, essentially?
But it's not a service. Service, I provide you with something. I'm not providing anybody with anything. This is a tool. This is a piece of equipment.
Okay.
So I-
And I think, Mike, you'll be talking with Chief Hamlin at some point, and I don't know if Whitman's gonna be in the queue or not.
At some point, they probably are going to be. They're gonna have to. It's the future. The future, somebody is. But there's a big money issue with this too. Everybody else doesn't know.
Yeah.
All right, just adding, if I heard correctly, this has been a two-year process of getting the brand, getting this equipment ordered. So it's not like we, Whitman can flip a switch and suddenly have it come running, right? Like you would just-
Okay, yes, Stephanie?
So I'm just curious, how long the videos are stored for?
Yep.
What safety is taken as far as, before you breach of access? And then, is that information available, like, to the administration if they want, if they are reviewing it? I mean, it's a year of this school.
So, let's go with the first one. Uh, off the top of my head, I forget the minimum we have to keep it for. It'll be kept for no more than, uh, I think it's 37 months. The access is limited to the officer, the supervisor, and then we have, uh, a manager. For lack of a better term, a manager. So, the, there is one officer who is responsible for when they upload these. When they come in, they just take them off, put them into a docking station, and it automatically uploads. That's through Motorola, um, that stores that on the cloud. So safety features, well, you've got police all over the country and the world, and I'm sure somewhere in there, there's, uh, I'm sure there's, um, US, you know, National Police, whether it's Capitol or somebody using that same service. So it's stored securely there. Access, again, I actually don't have access right now. I have to go to the manager for her to be able to release something to me. Um, and that's on anything, that routine car stop, um, any interactions at the school. The other thing with keeping it, there is a provision in here, if, let's say, uh, he forgets to shut it off after, because you, you have to remember something too. This is important that I have Derek wearing this, because Derek's here every day in the full uniform of a police officer, because I don't have a lot of police officers. So he leaves here quite often to help the officers on the street, back them up or answer calls. Um, he responds quite a bit. So to have him have to take on and off a piece of equipment is, uh, an inconvenience, I think, is probably the politest word I could use. Um, but going back to that, your recording question, if he records it, or any officer records something by accident, they can then flag it, they then let the manager know, the manager will review it and say, yeah, that's something that can be deleted, because it was just an accident, it was a, it was still on during a, a conversation on the street. Um, if it's something that by, by law we have to keep, so we, we fall into the same public records laws as you do, um, then it would be kept and it'd be archived. I'm gonna tell you, 99.9% of this stuff is never even gonna be seen, which is crazy. Uh, once it goes to court, um, it's actually only released to the district attorney, who can then decide what copies they're gonna make for discovery and other things. And that's actually securely released to them. It's not like I brought in that thumb drive, it's not even like we're handing that off. So I'm very confident in the security, uh, in the confidentiality of this.
And no officer could even see that footage except that officer. And the supervisor can only see the footage of the officer under his supervision. It's only myself and the chief and the manager who have the ability to obtain all footage. And then on a weekly basis, once that are tagged and titled, we will purge it and we just delete, because there is, there's no importance of it. It, it was inadvertently hit, it was, they took it off and they went to the restroom. Those things do occur, and it, it worked for them. It's a new, it's a new tool, it's a new gun. I know you're open to creating a new, a new way to get used to it. And so that's really where we're at.
Steve, quick question?
Um, Hammond, any advice, informed, communicated?
So, so as soon as the committee makes a decision, I'll roll it out to the parents and, and talk to Mike about when we can go live. I'd like to do it, if it's approved tonight ASAP. Um, one of the big concerns I had with, with, when I told Mike is I just need to let parents know what's going on. Uh, because this is a new tool, and it's something different. And I wanted to be proactive rather than reactive. Um, so as soon as, if and when the committee makes a, a decision, um, we'll move forward, uh, proactively with, with parents.
Yes, Dawn, question on-
One distinction with the motion, because the MOU does say, between the district and police departments of Whitman and Hanson, so the language to be added, will it specify? I'm reading from page five. So, the body one camera will be used by the Hanson SRO.
Correct.
And so it'll just, Hanson will be distinguished there. I don't want Whitman to believe that I'm now any-
Correct. And, and I don't know if you can answer this. So, so Whitman's not doing this, and this really doesn't have a lot about body cameras. But I know we have that reciprocal, that Derek goes over to Whitman sometimes. Um, will he have to disengage with the camera, or no?
It's under our policy. There are no mutilated agreements or anything, or as you indicated, in that detail. If it's in your policy, and you're from another agency, your camera is with you.
Okay.
Very good. Okay, so move to the vote. All right, all in favor of changing the MOU, adding this, um, from their policy? Please raise your hands. Okay, and against?
I'm gonna abstain because I do want abstention.
Uh, just, okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Appreciate your time.
If anybody has any further questions or anything, please just call or email.
Okay.
No, they're gonna need that. So will-
Yeah, I'm gonna revise the policy, I'll get it to you ASAP, and then get something out. I'm gonna need both of your signatures. Okay. So, give me a little time.
We put, we put one on, she had a GoPro, but she kept rolling around and knocking it off, so.
Jeff, and we appreciate that, because, you know, the camera is, when he's responding outside this.
Yep. Awesome. Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate your time. Thank you. Nikki? Seal of bi-literacy, seal of bi-literacy.
All right. Um, good evening, members of the school committee. Thank you for this time. I am happy to be here this evening to share information about the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's seal of bi-literacy and Whitman Hanson's participation. As you know, last year was the first year offering the seal to our students. In your packets are two letters regarding the seal. One is a copy of the letter sent to, um, families, and the other is a description of the seal and the criteria for earning the seal of bi-literacy. To help me share this information with you this evening, I am pleased to, um, introduce Felicia Barboza, our district's family liaison for multilingual learners. For those of you who have not had the fortune and pleasure of meeting Felicia previously, she is a former Whitman Hanson student, a current social work grad student, and my right hand in working with and for our multilingual learner families. Felicia is, was pivotal in helping me get the seal for the, for Whitman Hanson, so I've asked her to share this information with you this evening.
Hello, boa noite. Uh, boa noite means good evening in Portuguese. I'm not gonna say anything in Portuguese to not take up too much time. Uh, but about the seal of bi-literacy, the- But about the seal of bi-literacy, the Massachusetts State Seal of Bi-Literacy recognizes high school graduates who obtain proficiency in English and another world language by graduation. It's a credential that's recognized by colleges and employers, and it's a skill. For our students, this means getting more opportunities, chances of getting higher-paid jobs, and also credits for college. We're excited to celebrate multilingualism and recognize the efforts of our English learners in obtaining proficiency in English and also our world, our first language speaking, English speaker, sorry, that was a tongue twister. But for our students who have English as a first language, learning another world language in high school.
And we are very fortunate with Felicia, who is herself bilingual. In addition to the seal of bi-literacy, Felicia and I also run our LPAC, which is our English learner parent advisory council. The purpose of this council is to work with families in the community. We are looking for a parent or guardian to partner with us and become president. We are really fortunate with the families that we have who attend our meetings, and we're just looking for that one parent who's ready to take on the presidency in the interim. Felicia and I will continue to organize and schedule these meetings. This year, Felicia sent out a survey to our families to try to obtain what is best for them. So we will be offering a series of virtual, AM, PM, in-person, a wide range of opportunities for our English learner families. Our first meeting is October twenty-ninth, that will be in the evening, and that is in-person. You are always all welcome to come. So if there are any questions, otherwise, thank you. We appreciate your support.
Felicia, don't go anywhere. So today, it's nice to see you tonight, because this afternoon I had a conversation with Lauren Kelly, with the, who works at Food Bank. And she was singing your praises and thanking you so much for the help with the Food Bank, with, with the families, and getting the information out there. And she even wants to work with you even more than you already are. But she was singing your praises, and, you know, knowing that you were my student, too. I said, well, I sing her praises, too. So I just wanted to let you know that you are well thought of there, well thought of. Yes.
How many invitations did you send out to LPAC families? I'm curious how many we have.
We send it to all families, all of our Yale families.
Yeah. How many do we have? Could you number?
Last time I checked, two forty-five, right Nikki?
Two hundred and forty-five. Hopefully you find that several will want to step up.
We hope so. We know parents are very busy, and they have a lot going on, so we also understand why parents haven't.
Right.
But we're hoping that they are willing to.
Right. I have one follow-up question on our first language English students. What does it take for them to become bilingual where we don't have a world language offered until ninth grade?
So for our first language English-speaking students, both, whether English learner or first language English speaker, the criteria is the MCAS exam. That's the English requirement. So all of our students take that, and that is, meets the English proficiency standard. For all of our students, then, who want that second language, there, we, we administer the stamp assessment. And so the students, last year we administered it to sixty-eight seniors who took Spanish. We were, we were very pleased with the results. There were twelve students that were within one domain. We offered a retest. The hardest domain for just four years of a world language opportunity is speaking, and it's where we've noticed that, that the area of need is. We did have one student who was a first language English speaker to achieve the seal of bi-literacy. Yeah, so we're, I think it's very good information for our world language department to have, so they're very excited to utilize the information they got to fine-tune their, their teaching and their materials. But it, it's more of a challenge, for sure. But our English, our English learners experience the same similar challenge when they're learning English, when they come to us in middle school or, or high school. So we're trying to just be cognizant of those pieces and meet the needs of both those groups to really have this opportunity. But thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Yeah, oh, Steve?
I wanna thank.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Oh, that's okay. I wanna thank your assistant superintendent, Ian Felicia, because when I met Felicia, it was last year, year and a half ago, phenomenal, we had a great conversation. Just appreciate what you keep doing. Yes, if I followed my family roots on the Hoise side, we have French and Portuguese. I spent eight years running French. I'm gonna keep helping polishing. Every time I see you, you're like the beacon of light for languages for us. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nikki. Moving right along, I just wanted to highlight, we were a national award winner at Whitman-Hanson Regional this, this summer. We all heard of Active Minds and Kyle Care's. We had a presentation last year, and I'm just gonna read to the public and to, to the committee. Our collaboration with Active Minds has been a vital part of the Kyle Care's approach, empowering students to take the lead in encouraging their peers to learn about, discuss, and seek help for mental health without stigma. Across three states, forty-seven Kyle Care's partner schools have established Active Minds chapters, and none have made a greater impact than Whitman-Hanson Regional High School, which has been honored with the 2024 Transformational Change Award by Active Minds at the 2024 National Conference in Washington DC in August. Panther pride is thriving. And there's, we posted on social media, the advisors and the founders of the group taking a trip, I think the first week in August, to receive this national award. So they're moving along, and it's a, it's an outstanding new group to the high school, and we hope to keep that for the future.
Maybe should go into the express.
Yes, I'll get that in there. I'll have, I'll have the advisors. Tracy's in the back, so we'll, we'll bring you in to, to do an interview.
We'll bring you the information, Trace.
Moving along, so I'm looking for approval of, of goals for, it's a two-year goal this year. It's, it's hard to say it's the superintendent's goal, because I think we have a team approach of the two assistants, myself, and even Steve and the special education director coming up with goals for the next two years. So under the superintendent's rubric of goals or evaluation, there are four standards. Instructional leadership, management operations, community engagement, and professional culture. Under standard one, which is instructional leadership, the educational leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staffs by cultivating a shared vision that makes powerful teaching and learning the central focus of schooling. So under strategic objective number three in curriculum, under that standard, the goal is to provide a comprehensive, innovative, and culturally responsive curriculum that fosters engaged and adaptive, adaptable students who have foundational skills that can be universally applied in an ever-changing world. The strategic initiatives that we're gonna look at over the next two years is in alignment with the district's MTSS framework, which MTSS stands for Multi-Tierred System of Support. It's like institutionalize, or the use of data in decision-making regarding instructional and learning practices, ensure the existence of K to twelve, a K to twelve continuum of student knowledge and data that will promote a shared responsibility for shaping a Whitman-Hanson student. So in a nutshell, we're gonna be forming a, a rubric of how we do walkthroughs for, for our leadership team, so we can go about and have a standard of when each leader in the district is evaluating or looking at and hoping to provide coaching to teachers in their classrooms. Right now, we don't have that, so we're gonna work through that. Each individual, principal, assistant principal, department chair, kinda goes in and uses the DESI rubrics to evaluate staff. We wanna have a collaborative approach to see that what I'm looking for, what George is looking for, what Karen's looking for, is on the same page. So when we walk into a classroom, we can give productive feedback to, to our staff members. Under standard two, management and operations, promote the learning and growth of all students and success, and the success of all staff by ensuring a safe, efficient, and effective learning environment, utilizing resources to implement appropriate curriculum, staffing, and scheduling. Strategic objective, resources, fiscal, human, and physical. Commit to the efficient planning, acquisition, and allocation of fiscal, human, and physical resources to achieve the mission and vision of the district. Over the next couple of years, overseeing the MSBA building project for the new Whitman Middle School and work with the members of the building committee to make thoughtful decisions about design, materials, and construction, continue to evaluate human capital across the district to ensure fiscal responsibility and efficiency while maintaining appropriately-tiered supports for systems. Again, in a nutshell, the building will break ground in, in, in March of this year with, can't believe it, should be opening the doors in December of twenty-six, so a year and a half. In that timeframe, though, we have to analyze who's going to be moving over to the new building as far as fifth grade, what other needs they might have as far as staffing with adding a fifth grade, and then really looking at our preschool currently, because we have a space crunch, and how to maybe move some things around once the new Whitman Middle School is open. In that process, really trying to manage and advocate for the school budget to keep the resources that we currently have in district and maintain, and ensure that we're maintaining the curriculum and staffing to make effective instructional gains for our, for our, for our students. Under standard three, promote the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff through effective partnerships with family, community organizations, and other stakeholders that support the mission of the school district. Strategic objective four, community and culture, provide a welcoming and affirming school environment that removes barrier, barriers one, where students, staff, and families and community members feel valued and have a sense of belonging. Under this initiative, create a multifaceted plan that ensures opportunities to share student growth, work, and success in a way that's accessible and meaningful for all, and design systems and processes to engage community members in a varied, meaningful two-way dialect and share insights and thoughts and feelings. I think we saw a little bit of that through Nikki's presentation and through LPAC and a couple of questions that came from the board. We have our student group here engaging in all aspects of, of K to twelve in, in the buildings. And then it's my job to make sure that I, I have a collaborative dialogue with community members and sharing the good things we do in our district, to then educate the taxpayers who support our, our projects, to support our budget, and making sure I clarify questions that they may have, and dispel rumors that might come up through social media or through other avenues, to make sure that the taxpayer and, 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 and parents in town know what's actively going on in our school. And under professional culture, standard four, promote success for all students by nurturing and sustaining a school culture of reflective practice, high expectations, and continuous learning for staff. Strategic objective, and this is getting challenging in twenty-twenty-four, staff recruitment, development, and retention, create an environment that is diverse, inclusive, and engaging to attract, develop, and retain highly qualified staff. Strategic objectives, develop an effective staff recruitment, retention plan to increase diversity, equity, and inclusion practices that will assist Whitman-Hanson Regional School District in attracting varied candidates. Work with local institutions of higher education to establish partnerships to, to identify potential future teachers while they are still in high school and enhance the pedagogy of current WHRSD staff members. So a few things here. I think it was out a little bit that we're only gonna look for, or hire on the basis of race and religion. I think I did see that on social media. That's not really true. The goal of this, my goal in, in this is to try to bring the best candidate forward to Whitman-Hanson, but make us a diverse community where people who are of diverse backgrounds apply. I don't have a lot of people that apply of diverse backgrounds. So we're trying to establish, when we, when we promote ourselves, that we are a diverse community. And we have students of all different colors and religions, and they have different beliefs. So again, my role is to try to get that out there to the communities, to our local higher education institutions, that we are a welcome, welcoming community, no matter what people might see on social media, that we do want teachers who are the best caliber, and they wanna stay here, and educate all kids, no matter who they are. So that's part of that, again, two-year goal, and then retaining staff. And it's not always about the money. There are districts around here that pay more. There are districts around here, around here who pay less. But it's about the culture of the buildings and the, and the leadership of their buildings, and people wanna stay. We don't have a lot of teachers leaving necessarily, but we have seen a, a, a change of teachers leaving the profession to maybe stay home, or after maternity, or after a leave, not come back, and maybe move closer to home. So we're asking those questions, why? And then, again, attracting staff, and I think I shared with you at opening that we have some locals. We have, Mr. Kelkors is an alum. He presented tonight. We're trying to retain our alum. So through opportunities, through ESY, the extended school year, summer programs, we were able to attract long-term subs, substitutes, and people that said, I don't know if I wanna dip my toes in education, but we're trying to attract them, and then maybe guide them to a Bridgewater State University or a Massa Soyet to, to look at what the career opportunities are in schools. And it's not just teaching. Mr. Boyce was a paraprofessional for a long time. I have school psychologists, I have counselors, I have OTs, I have PTs. I have multi-layers of opportunities within our school district for students who may not just wanna teach, but maybe wanna work with students. Plus, as a district, we have a business office, we have facilities and operations, we have technology, all roles that we have to fill, and the job pool is diminishing. So we're actively working to make ourselves a more attractive candidate for all folks. So those are my goals over the next two years. And we decided, again, as an office, that I've been working on goals every year, and we never seem to be able to establish what we wanna get done in a year. So we looked at, or asking for approval to look at it over two years, to really establish some thought as we progress through, and then report out periodically throughout the course of the year. You will evaluate me in, in, in June or May, and you can base it on some of these goals, but then the progress that we've made, and then in two years, look at where we stand. And I think these are all achievable over two years, not under one, but it will enhance how we do business within, in the regional school district. So I'm open to questions, and then we'll be seeking a motion to approve.
Let's move it first.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Jeff, very much. Very helpful. Every time you put this together, of course, I really like the two-year idea. It really transcends and says a lot. Motion to accept the superintendent's goals for the school year twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-six.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yes, please.
Yeah. Go ahead, Steve.
So it sounded to me that clearly stated, it's encouragement for minorities, inviting and creating an encouraging environment for minorities, diverse ethnic groups to apply, but the hiring would be based on merit qualifications.
Absolutely, always. And, and it's not just, it's diverse. When I say diverse, it's all. You know what I mean? It's multifaceted of diversity, and that's what we really need. We have a multifaceted group of students here. And one of the comments that I had from a student was, I'd like to see people that look like me in my building. And that's, that's a very fair comment from a high school student. And we don't have a lot of people that look different.
And a lot of them don't apply, and I know the Mass Teachers Association has been working on this for years to try to get diverse, you know, people from diverse areas to go into the teaching profession. They've done all kinds of workshops and everything, and so it's not just us, it's the whole state that, you know, a lot of people are leaving this career, unfortunately. And, you know, trying to get, I remember at the middle school, we would have no diverse applicants for positions, you know? We'd have forty applicants, none of them were of diverse, you know, ethnicity, so.
That's meaning you're not getting qualified.
Oh, no. Not saying, no, no.
No, and we'll always hire on merit.
We always hire on merit.
Certification and merit.
I remember, we had this conversation, Michelle, this, this issue. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
I just, I just had a couple of, I don't know if it's questions or comments or thoughts. One is going to the hiring practices, I think, I think, understanding the, understanding kind of where we are as a profession around education and the shortage of qualified teachers in general is something that I don't know that everybody's aware of. I don't know that it's always the most friendly world to be an educator right now. So I think that's something for us all to be mindful of. And I, Jeff, to your point, I think that we can't underestimate how valuable it is for kids to see themselves reflected in the adults that support them. And that doesn't just mean, mean to be like physical reflection of your skin color or your gender or anything. I think just to see pieces of them reflected back, I think, in terms of an educational experience is something that is, is really, really important. So thank you for that. I wanted to go back around the strategic objective three on the. I wanted to go back around the strategic objective three on the learning walks. I had a couple, I had a question first of all. I'm assuming that you and Nikki and Jordan are not sole evaluators, that the principals, the building principals are also evaluating.
They are the only ones that evaluate. Principals, we don't evaluate.
Okay, that's just the way it was. That's something that I was gonna say. My other, my other thought, and again, nothing, I don't disagree with anything in here. I think we're so data-driven, especially post-COVID, that my worry sometimes is that we lose nuance around the like human children in front of us, and they get reduced to numbers. And I think along with that comes the like, the role of teachers to be really acutely aware of those kids and to, and to know that they're not just a number, and to know those different components that have gotten them to where they are. And so data's important, and we need to respond to data. And I, but I think that like continuing to maintain that lens too of like maybe one of the elements of the learning walk rubric is around like cultural proficiency or classroom relationships or community or trust, like some of those things that I feel like are really, really important around understanding our kids and thinking about this active minds piece and understanding our kids and their mental health, all those other things that I think can't be reduced to like an I-ready score. You know, so I think that that is just something that I'm always thoughtful about, and I know that you probably are too, but doesn't always show up in like a printed report in the same way.
Sure.
Yeah, and I think that's a great point, and I think the goal is, this two-year concept is to normalize what it is we're looking for in the second year. And so the first is to find out what it is we're looking for across the schools, across the grade levels. And right now, yes, we talk about data, we try to make data-informed decisions, but there's also, when a student has a diagnostic, there's also that time when we're making our groups where there's the piece that says, the teacher has the ability to say, well, I think for this reason, this group should change, or I think I know the background of this student, that this group should change. I think what we have, though, in new administration, whatever their experience is, is that we are, we can still be different, but we need to be a district. So what we're trying to do is normalize that across the board so that a teacher in Whitman can go to a school in Hanson, and they can see what they see, and it should be a baseline so that every student who leaves an elementary school has a similar-like experience to get to the middle. Every student that leaves the middle schools has a similar-like experience to get to the high school. And that's the next phase. You know, we're going to be doing learning walks, we have some visits set up for how different people do learning walks, how different schools do learning walks, and then how our, some of the people that we get our curriculum from emphasize learning walks so that we can all come together so when we put it in place, it's a baseline so that not only students but teachers can feel like we're doing the right thing in a thoughtful way to help students and teachers.
Okay. All right, so.
Yeah. All of your goals before this have been one-year goals, right?
Yes.
So I just think it's important that everybody understands that teachers don't have one-year goals, our goal cycles are on a two-year cycle. And so for you to do this, it makes a lot more sense. For the first year, we have to present data and evidence to show that we are working towards achieving these goals, and sometimes you're not, or sometimes the data, you know, like if you look at the Whitman Middle School, like that one's going to be easy to present some things. So I just wanted to get that out there because I don't want the public or people on the committee to think that it's sort of a cop-out that you're going to a two-year goal because that is what the norm is in the education world. Secondly, I appreciate that our goals are not revolved around the budget. I think previously, in previous years, when you set goals, they are dependent on a budget, and that's dangerous and it's such a failure. And so I think that this is good because it is not that way. And while, you know, you do mention the budget in here, you're talking about advocating and educating the public on our budget and the policies and what we're in charge of and things like that, so I appreciate that.
Okay, move to the vote. Don.
I just wanted to add, when I read the goals, I think about the end result also as evaluating you on the goals. And I know you've identified the standards here for one through four, but the evaluation tool that the committee will be using is going to ask the progress on a professional practice goal, a student learning goal, and two to four district improvement goals. So that is outlined already on the evaluation tool. So I'm hoping going forward, perhaps you could identify how these goals would align with a professional practice goal of yours, which one would be a student learning goal? I don't know if that ties in with the walks or not, but that may be helpful as towards the benchmarks, and you're hitting things just to wrap it all together.
Sure.
And then if you could just add any more commentary around preschool, because I know we got the class size report last month and didn't have preschool numbers. So we know that the nation and Massachusetts is moving towards early education, not just for those that are identified with needs and to have a subset of typical students, but universal early education. So where do we stand right now with this current space you have? Because this building is still going to take two years.
We're full.
So what do we, okay.
We're full. And we, in fact, last year, I remember I came to the committee and added a classroom teacher because of the needs of certain stu-, a different population. So I am not accepting any new, now if it's a special education student, we formulate a schedule that works around that, but we are very, very tight. And again, in this process, if need be, we might have to do something on the fly as we move forward with space in the district.
And you'll come back to the committee?
I would come back to the committee. I don't, I don't have the exact number right now, especially the breakup between like peers and special education students. But Chris Ahern, who's the principal of the preschool, he works wonders with scheduling and making sure all students are serviced, and also provides the students, the tuition and students as like peers to make sure that the IEPs of the students that are needing the services have the like peers and their IEPs are being met. But we're tight.
Okay. Okay. So you envision maybe not even adding additional teachers to provide additional early education seats? Perhaps it will just be a matter of the staff that you're using in a small space having more available.
I have a lot of ideas over the next two years on preschool.
Right.
I don't have, I have a lot of ideas that'll, that'll go with the framework in the Commonwealth that's moving towards free, you know, but that we're not close to that yet. But we have had a lot of ideas about different, of ways we can, we can use space in district to make sure that all of our littles are being serviced as best we can and giving more parents an opportunity to use Whitman Hansen versus going to a private preschool. But we're not there, we're scratching that surface right now. That's why I need two years as well.
Yeah, thank you.
I want to thank you for including a goal that is focused on actually achieving student well-being and achievement and sort of putting in the peripheral, the perpetual demand to the race to the bottom for funding our children is perpetual, and it, there is no low, low enough. We're going to go back to social media here. We see on social media a percentage put out for increase that no school is really meeting. It would drive us into receivership. It would be devastating for our students. Sometimes when people don't understand the impact of financing on education and how harmful just sort of putting a percentage there is having a solid leader that says, you know, I won't let, I won't let it be a race to the bottom for our kids, and we're going to elevate our children in a responsible way. Additionally, again, social media begins to talk about a percentage, our budget is the largest budget with aid, that is a, that is a funding source that is not consistent, whereas revenue from taxation, we have the lowest in Plymouth County for revenue or taxation for these children. So when we're talking about stable income that has, that doesn't need the elasticity in the budget, well, that's going to the departments in the town, whereas our income is, needs more flexibility. We don't even have a full E and D to provide that flexibility. There's a lot of work to making sure that we can sort of move forward on that, and I'm glad that you're willing to take it on. Thank you.
All right, move to the vote. All those in favor of the superintendent's goals, please raise your hand. Okay, unanimous.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate it. Do you want to move on? You can take it over there.
Yeah, I guess so. So this is long, and so.
We need a delegate first.
I know.
Okay. Just wanted, I wrote it down for myself.
Yes, yes, yes. So I know two people are going to the conference. Rosemary, you're going. Dawn, you're going.
Yes.
Okay, is there anybody else who has signed up for the November conference? Okay, so of you two, one of you has to be a voter for these resolutions.
I'll volunteer.
You'll volunteer? Okay. So what I charge is, which.
So one or both could be. Does it say?
No, it has to be one, one vote.
Do you want to be?
I do not want to be, I just wanted to.
I'll relinquish like I did last week. I gave everyone.
No, no, no. I just wanted to, I wanted to know if you could get that.
So in the past, there have been no discussions on the resolutions, and the person just goes and votes how they feel. Last year, we did go through them. This year is a little bit tough because there are several resolutions, some I'm hoping that will be by the, what happens at the November election will be by the wayside. However, there are ones that are on there that are expiring, and I don't know if we have to revote those again. The expiring ones, if there's nothing done, they'll just go. So in other words, a lot of the expiring ones, we already voted on in the past. So personally, I don't see any reason to revote the expiring ones because they have been on our past things. But we do need to vote on so that Dawn will know how to express how we feel about resolutions one through, run through 10. Now, some of these she can abstain from because they really don't affect us. So we don't, she does not have to vote one way or another, or she can listen and vote how she wishes on some of those. The first one, resolution is development of an alternative to high-stakes MCAS test. Okay, this is from the MASC Board of Directors. So how do you feel about that?
Well, this could be at all contingent of time.
Yeah, that's what my, that's my opinion.
Yeah.
But I mean, I think.
But if MCAS as a graduation requirement gets repealed because of question two.
Right.
Right? Could they still potentially vote in the affirmative and they would develop an alternative?
They, they, they could. But.
I thought the plan was that it was going to be left up to each individual district.
Yeah, that's what, but this is not saying that, so we might.
Totally problematic. So I just, yeah, I don't know if we vote on this because it might be known. But when is the conference? Is it after?
The sixth.
So just quickly, just quickly, is this the solution if it doesn't pass as well?
It doesn't say that, so.
There's no plan.
No, there's no plan.
There's no plan.
Okay, that's what I.
Yeah, so I don't know. So what's your opinion on this? Yes, no, or, yes, Stephanie?
So I honestly think it's a great idea for there to be a standard that all schools have to adhere to. I do not personally think MCAS is the right standard. I would rather see a traditional like end-of-the-year final exam, and then that would be reflected rather than anything else. But I think that I very much appreciate Dr. Jones' thing of getting rid of mid-years and final exams if you're not going to go over the materials and make sure they're learned. But at the same time, I think we have enough students in transition between schools, between towns, moving, whatever, that it would be nice if there was some consistency still for the students.
Yeah, and I, and I think what everybody has to remember on question two, it's about using MCAS as a graduation requirement, not as dumping MCAS necessarily, but as not to use it as a graduation requirement, which I will give my personal opinion on that, I am completely for, because between the L students and students like my grandson who is Down Syndrome, who cannot receive a diploma for going to school every day like everybody else and can't get a diploma, I think, and just gets a certificate of attendance, I think that's wrong. If he's here and doing what he can do, he should be able to get a diploma, and I've always felt that way ever since MCAS was instituted as a requirement. So I don't care, but we need to move because we do have a lot of things. So what do, what do we want to say on this?
You could say all of it and vote. Just say, show our hands in favor of.
Yeah, all right, in favor of it, raise your hand. Okay, three, four, two. Okay.
I'm going to abstain on all because I'm the delegate going, so I don't want to give my opinion to sway.
Okay, all right. So it was a half and half, so.
What'd you get?
So you can either decide.
You decide or.
Depending on what happens.
Yeah, you can listen, and you can listen to. Yeah. Okay, yeah, you can, you can listen to what the people have to say too, and, you know, it might sway you a little bit differently because I've been that person who's had to do the vote, so it is a little difficult. All right. Increased compulsory attendance age. So this is from the Brockton School Committee, and they refer to the minimum-maxim age required by each state which a student must be enrolled in an attending public school or some equivalent accredited education program defined by law. So they feel that it increases economic and allows economic and social mobility across the lifespan.
It's important to note, it's not noted in here, though, that you need parental permission if you're 16, so withdraw. That's not noted in here, and I think that that's important.
So we say, all right, how many agree? Yes.
Do we have a discussion on it or just vote?
Just, let's just vote because it's not our questions. The thing is, if you have questions, tell Dawn.
In terms of when we're all making a choice to ask Dawn to vote on this eventually, so this comes from Brockton.
Yeah.
There are people that I know that published this, and one of the reasons is you don't have parents, sometimes they're engaged or were educated themselves, and they might allow it for their own, say, purposes. I'd like to have your opinion in my house or doing something. And maybe you want in an environment where that's normalized, and you don't realize the need for education beyond that. This allows for a standard for all children and people to have access. I think that leaving school early, you might not know that it's going to affect you negatively later on in life at the time, but it absolutely will.
Okay. So how many agree with this resolution, then? Raise your hand if you agree. One, two, three, four, six, so the majority. Okay. Number three, safe storage of firearms. This has actually been up before, and we turned it down.
We turned it down last year.
Uh, we turned it down last year. Because it's not that we don't agree about the safety, it's about controlling the household where the child lives. And that's not our job. We have enough we have to worry about. How do we police where these children live?
It's on the top of the, I'm happy you sent it.
Oh, it's not. I have it clear online, I'm sorry. Ramham School Committee.
Was that something we already voted on?
We voted it down last year.
We voted it down.
I don't know how it made it in the back.
Are we, are we just keeping the past committees sort of?
Yeah, and it was, yeah, I would, because how do we control what's at a person's home? You can't. We'd love to, but you can't, you know?
Same as like controlling a child's behavior at home.
And behavior at home.
Right. Thanks.
So.
I disagree with this on principle. I think firearms should absolutely help safely, but I think honestly, the problem with these resolutions is now they're going to, how are they going to?
We're the monitor of that. Chris, the committee.
So if I'm reading this correctly, this is not suggesting that the schools or the committees or whatever be involved in any level of enforcement, it's more just explaining the importance or communicating the importance of safe storage and so on, so on.
We felt that it was not our job, that, you know, specifically, yes, we all agree with it, but it's not specifically the job of a school committee to do that education.
So are we doing it to parents or are we doing it to the students?
It's on the second, on the right-hand side, the second column, so.
Oh.
The resolved, they urge communities to work with their local law enforcement agencies, health agencies, nonprofit organizations to collaborate and increase efforts to inform district parents and guardians of their obligations regarding secure storage of firearms in their homes and vehicles. So it's putting an, a duty on our administration.
Yeah.
To inform district parents. To inform district parents. That's the resolution.
They got enough to do.
Not to.
They have enough to do. Okay, resolution four, you might not be able to read either two. That's on the top. That's School Bus Stop Arms Surveillance Act and Enforcement Penalties. And we all know what that is.
You voted that in favor last year.
Yeah, we voted in favor last year and I.
This must have been tabled from last year.
Yeah, must have been tabled. So that is, you know, the stop arm. If somebody violates it, there's a consequence. Should be. Okay, raise your hand if you agree with that one. Okay, that's unanimous on that. Five, aligning taxing authority with the required local contribution. This is not, this is with Arlington School Committee. It does not really talk about regions. So, and regions sometimes come under different information, different things, so.
Chair, I actually want to give some feedback on this only because.
Yep.
Pulling up our budget book from last year because it talks about minimum local contribution.
Yep.
And for example, Hanson's enrollment last year, reduced by 30 students in our budget book, but the minimum local contribution that is part of our statutory method calculation actually went up by $704,000 for Hanson. So it's relevant when you do talk about, you could have declining enrollment, but the way Desi calculates the minimum local contribution of a community to pay for school, it, it went up and it went from 10.6 million to 11.3 million. I'm not doing the math in my head, but 700,000, the percentage, I'm thinking it's more than 2.5%.
And that's what it says.
And that's what they're talking about here, that, that some of the towns are concerned that, you know, the requirement, that minimum local contribution is, Desi's asking for that to be higher than the 2.5% which is the proposition two and a half and taxation that can be raised and increased. So there is some relevance to.
All right, so how many agree with that one? Raise your hand.
I'm going to do the math on this.
Yeah.
Well, yes is that you agree with allowing, aligning the taxing authority with the local, required local contribution. And one to read is like the last paragraph is usually the best where it says, therefore be it resolved that the Mass Association School Committee is called for the enactment of legislation that would increase a municipality's levy limit by the amount of increase of the required local contribution in excess of 2.5% granting the municipality the ability to raise local revenues, meaning by Mass General Laws, Chapter 70.
This is to go over the two and a half percent?
Yeah.
So this is, this is two and a half percent?
Yeah.
It would allow them to go over the levy limit.
Yeah, but, yeah, it talks about municipalities, meaning the municipality of a city or town, not us. It wouldn't.
So each individual town with our assessment would be able to go over the two and a half percent. Now, in the backside, it's true, education is costing more than that two and a half percent and it's something a lot of towns aren't recognizing within their adjusted budget that, and we see that within, we see the conversation now. I'd like it to only be two and, you know, two and a half percent is what we're being asked to, and that would be impossible to meet student needs. And so.
Okay.
Without, without something like this, but I do think that that's a broader conversation outside of school committee.
Yeah, I do too.
That is a, that's a conversation with municipalities and maybe Desi increasing age.
Well, you just remember that these are suggestions that they present to, you know, states.
On the state level.
What do we think? Yes? How many say yes? Okay, no one on that one, Dawn. Support of legislation to improve fiscal health of rural school districts. Not us. Deerfield, Sunderland, Watley, and Tier.
Because, because it is us. Because when we take out the money from 70, when 70 is dispersed, the goal of all the state money is to create equitable education with what a municipality gives. And so it is us because if we, you know, some of that money would sort of divert over.
Why does he use the word rural?
Rural, because in rural schools that the municipality, so right now we have what's something called rural aid.
Is that an actual designation?
Yeah, rural is, it's like way, way out west of Mass.
We're not designated rural.
No, we are, we are not, but it does affect us because essentially if we say yes to it or if it goes in, it, it shifts it over there and maybe a lot of shift.
There's a limited amount of money that has to go.
One amount determined by the QBs.
That's for us.
Or we might want to push it if those kids aren't getting depending, I, I'm not.
Okay, guys, we're not talking to each other. One at a time. Steven.
Similar conversations here through the MIAA or whatever I was attending when I was in the findings committee. One of the things about rural schools and I'm glad there is at least one regional district, if they're so small, and I wouldn't want to, I'm not penalizing them for that, that's not their fault, that maybe they could fall under the jurisdiction in a collaborative of towns under one superintendent.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, that's really not our decision.
And I know that's not our decision. I know it's kind of more outside of it.
Yeah.
But I just want to give a purview of what.
Okay.
Saying yes or no or, or whatever.
All right, so what do you think about resolution six? Yes? Any yeses?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, none on this one, Dawn. Okay, number seven, fully adjusting Chapter 78 for inflation. Hello? Yes?
Yeah.
That's an easy yes. Okay, there you go, Dawn. We're all getting a head shakes on that one. No, coupon number eight, too bad. We don't even get it. We don't even get it with regional school districts. Why should they be equitable? We don't even get what we're supposed to get.
We get, we get more. We get more money.
No, I know, that's what I said, but we don't get 100% and they want equitable and we can't even get 100% that we're guaranteed.
So are they saying we want the same reimbursement?
Yeah.
And they can charge.
And they can charge, we can't.
Yeah. So they could, they could like make up.
Charge. How many say yes to that one? Nobody, Dawn. Okay, vocational and technical school group. I'm going to abstain on these two because I really don't understand their stuff.
But isn't, if I'm reading it correctly, is this about assessments to the town?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
So I do, I think it's relevant.
I do too. The tiered system.
Yeah, but it's just assessing, like if it's an elementary one or a high school one, that type thing. All right, well, how many vote yes on resolution nine? Okay, three. 10, expansion in capacity in Chapter 74 Vocational Technical Programs. Now, sorry. That's my personal opinion.
So this is reimbursement differs for a regional school than a school.
This is vocational technical schools only. It's not a regional school, it's vocational.
Yes, just building authority in terms of alternative for the overall financial structure, standards for project, the nature of the school project being considered.
Yeah, but it's, it's not financial assistance, but it's to the schools, not to the towns. And the project being considered potential difference requirements for elementary, middle school, comprehensive high schools, vocational, technical. I didn't know there was a difference.
Those.
Than us. They want to have it different than how our, we're assessed, school building. They want the tech, you know, in other words, different than for Whitman Hansen Regional High School for South Shore O-Tech to be, have a different financial structure.
So.
I don't think that's all right.
74 does already give more special ed because of that difference already gives more special ed to regional school than it does.
Yeah. All right, says that. All right. How many say yes to 10? Yes, did you have any questions?
It sounds like they just want to be able to expand the programs so that equitable education available to everybody as far as vocational programs.
No, because it's to the Mass School Building Authority. So they're looking for the Mass, the school building authority is who we're getting funding from for the middle school. And so they want to be the financial structure for, if they're getting an award from the MSBA, to be different than regular high schools.
Honestly, if they're going to, if this is an opportunity to get more money for a bill that we're all going to be paying for.
Well, that would be different, but I don't think that's what this is.
I, I really feel like I'm not.
I need the formulas.
Understanding enough. And I think Dawn's going to get some good information that.
Yeah.
I'm going to abstain on that.
I wonder if it's to provide more funding for more vocational schools to be built. That's what I'm.
Well, it's, it could be, but it's talking about project eligibility. So yeah, I guess so, but you have to remember that that takes away from.
Yeah, because it talks about their, their experience of unprecedented applications and don't have enough seats. So I think they're looking to expand seats.
Yeah, yeah, we're going through that with South Shore O-Tech.
You all are, yeah.
So.
But I don't know that, I mean, I'm not sure that it's, I think that, I think that some of this sounds like regulation differences and criteria sound different. It's not necessarily just sound like.
Well, up the top it does.
I, I think my understanding is that it actually allows schools to create more vocational programs within their school. That's my.
Yeah, I think that's.
Of it anyway, and I know we are working on doing some of that ourselves, you know, offering some more culinary programs.
Yeah, unfortunately.
We don't fall under 74 though.
Okay, let's take a vote, please. How many vote yes on this one?
I'm going to abstain because I don't know the numbers. So it's a no.
Okay, and the rest of those other ones that were already voted on, so. I mean, like some of these, we're automatic on, guys.
It says that they've already all been approved.
Yeah, they're just going to expire.
Yeah, because they didn't get anywhere. They didn't get anywhere.
May be reconsidered and re-adopted.
Yeah, because they haven't gone anywhere. Okay, approval of invoices.
Steven.
Steven, you're up, buddy. Stop chatting, stop chatting.
Thank you. All right, so I have provided for you many invoices from FY24. And I will just preface by saying this is common in towns, municipalities, regional school districts that there's prior year bills that are missed and they have to be paid in the future year. However, I don't like that it's $120,000 worth of bills that I'm bringing to you today. And I also unfortunately believe that probably the next meeting we will still have a few more. Part of this is just because of the challenges the business office has faced over the last couple of years and the procurement of items and invoices that have kind of been lost in the mix with or without a purchase order. So as we're obtaining all of these, we have to pay these bills. These are for services and, you know, supplies that we have obtained already and, and we do have to pay them. We're not able, we've closed FY24 for these purposes. We're still working through, you know, reconciling all of our accounts and so that will come over the next couple of months. But what I'm asking is to approve all of the bills that are before you totaling $120,797.26 to be paid in FY25.
And for those of you who haven't been on before, this happens every year. Not this much, but this happens every year because of things. So I'm hoping, Steven, that now that things are clearing up a little bit, that we won't have this big amount again next year.
So now that we're back into munis and the purchase order system, no purchases are being made or allowed to be made without a purchase order. So when we have a purchase order that we're able to easily track, we know that happens before the order is placed so that we have this purchase order. So when we get to May, I'm going to have a listing of purchase orders that are still open. If they haven't been paid, then we're going to go back to the person who opened that purchase order and say, did you do something different? Did you never place the order? And we can close the purchase order or where is that invoice? And that normally happens in the springtime when we start closing out the books. So I do not expect that this will continue. There's always a couple. There's always something that gets missed. But it would not be dislarded.
Steven?
And don't think, do we have a new district treasurer?
We have an interim treasurer right now.
And does that person play a part in this? Because, yeah, I understand the breach, everything else, but I, I never liked it in the towns having past invoice, past due, this and that. And I appreciate the system, you know, have a requisition on file, this and that, purchase Would he or she, whoever the interim is, be able to balance, move the, get it down in net zero?
Yeah, so the treasurer doesn't really play a role in, in this purchasing and paying of invoices. It's really our accounts payable clerk.
The old treasurer's name on one of these.
Just on the, on the invoice itself.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that was because it was directed to, that invoice was going to the treasurer.
Thank you.
Can I just?
A motion that we, I'll need a motion first. That we accept the.
Okay.
The lion's share is Higashi School, 80,000. Anything in particular because it does show from November of 2023. So they wouldn't have been calling or following up sooner than?
Yeah, so there's an issue with the Higashi School. So this was back and forth, just some miscommunication, I think some changes in their business office as well. And so those were invoices that were late getting to us.
Okay, but we verified that like we didn't already pay them like.
That's correct. We verified that.
Okay, and you want to double pay something of course to that tune, so.
Do they have three students who are going or are they three different months that were all filled at the same time?
I'm, there, there are three different invoices.
Yeah, I, I can't, I don't know if it's a, if it's three different students or not, it's three different invoices, four students at Higashi.
What question, so sorry?
Well, wait a minute, Glenn was before it, Glenn. Hold on, I got a question. All right, Steven, go ahead.
So it's, you're saying I pay bills and pay them in FY25, but you're saying you're not closing the FY24 bills until these are resolved. Do we got money in FY24 to pay these?
We do have money in FY24. FY24 is closed though, so that money is going to roll into E and D.
Because nothing was encumbered for.
That's correct.
I get you, okay.
And, and I will say, when Steven said, you know, we've, we've redone the business office, we had some issues in accounts payable right around the time of October, November, December, January, and that has been since resolved and you shouldn't see any issues going forward in the future.
Oh, I, I saw, he, I think he was telling a few things out of the office. Try to dodge it. Thank you. Motion that.
Man, payment, oh.
Motion that we transfer.
We'll do another discussion.
To pay the unpaid FY24 bills in FY2025, totally $120,797.26.
Do I have a second for discussion?
A second for discussion.
Okay, go ahead.
So I just want to know what is our E and D now rolling into last year? Is this coming out of E and D?
So I don't, I can't answer that right now until we totally close FY24.
Okay, so.
We haven't certified E and D yet for.
Oh, you haven't certified E and D. Is it coming out of E and D from last year then?
What is that? These bills will come out of FY25 general fund.
The general.
And then transfers will be made after we close FY24.
Do we believe that we'll be able to cover these with E and D because if we're taking it out of?
In, in a sense, yes, but it's not coming directly out.
We'll be okay.
We'll be okay.
All right, that's what. Thank you.
And again, the, this won't, you'll always get bills, but it won't be $120,000.
Yeah, it's the amount that's. All right, thank you.
Okay, move to the vote, please. All in favor? Okay, unanimous.
Thanks, Steven. Anything else for you today? Anything else for you today? No, you're good, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I just wanted to go through the, we just talked FY24, FY25, now we're gonna talk FY26. Why not? Roll it on, maybe FY27, 28 as well.
Five-year plans.
Five-year plan, the five-year plan's almost on point, on point when we get to FY28. So again, just the process for the public.
Okay, can I just?
Sure, absolutely.
So I asked Jeff to, because of all the things that are going on and in the media and everywhere about what we should be doing and what we shouldn't be doing, I thought that the public needs to know what our job is when it comes to the, our budget and the assessment and how we go about it. So I asked Jeff to talk about what the process is, and then I will have a couple of comments after that.
Sure, thanks, Beth. So budget is always what we do. So I'm happy that the committee's kind of gotten away a little bit in talking about students, because money is, money's money, and it gets tedious for us to always talk about either the lack of money or looking forward. But that's what we do in our office, and I'm glad the committee has got to look from our young ladies in the front, from Conley will always bring in some educational components. But we're always talking about how we can be fiscally responsible and how we're planning for the future. So already in the fall, each department will submit changes in staffing and spending needs. That's really the principles and all the other departments. We're gonna review and analyze all salaries, including projected changes in steps and lanes and salary increases, looking as a team to review our prior year budget and spending trends, review our variable costs, including utility usage and projections, reviewing anticipated open positions due to retirements and resignations, always looking at enrollment and class size, and looking at analysis, making sure that we can provide adequate staffing for the fall, for the next year. And then review available state and local data. And as we know, that state and local data doesn't come in until the end of January. And then we're presenting, actually, when we're talking about what we're going to get as a minimum local contribution, we get the numbers from the state at the end of January. After January 1st, 2025, the team will meet with finance committees of Whitman and Hanson if invited. I know I've always been invited to Whitman, occasionally invited to Hanson to go over some specifics. What I'm asking to is some transparency on the halves of the, of the towns. We got that last year. I'd love to get some numbers early on as to where towns are at and not necessarily just a line item of what the school's being allocated. I think that's important, that we see where things are trending and not just an allocation of a assessment that's already been predetermined. So I'm asking for that from Lisa and from Mary Beth, if possible. And then we can, we can talk as a team, as a committee, with finance committees, or my team can go and represent. Timeline, January 15th, it's a school committee meeting. We're gonna do a simple budget presentation, just kind of prelim some numbers so that you folks have an idea of where we're at. February 5th is our public hearing on the budget. That is a public hearing, and I encourage members of the public to come and ask questions, see where we are. We have public comment after that, but that's an open meeting to, to share thoughts and ideas. It's actually a public hearing. We have a school committee meeting in February. We'll talk numbers, we'll talk dollars and cents. The government, governor's budget's tentatively released in March. Sometimes that's the actual date, sometimes it's not. We have a school committee meeting in March on the 12th. It's a regularly scheduled meeting. And then I put March 19th as a tentative. That doesn't mean we have to meet, but that's the date that we have to send the assessment, or I should say, the 22nd is the date. But I don't think anybody wants to come in on Saturday to vote the assessment. We have to set the assessment and certify the projected FY26 budget and give that to the communities. You could do that sooner. You don't have to wait till the 26th or to the 19th. May 5th is the annual town meeting. We have a regularly scheduled April meeting. But in the past, we've always come together if there's issues and had to adjust the assessment based upon how high the committee sets. If the committee sets something that's, that's, and we asked for, and the committee sets something that is inconceivable for the town, sometimes the town has asked us to lower that assessment. We are going to ask for a, probably a level service budget. We have, I can't survive on a level funded budget, and there's a difference. Want to maintain the services that we have, and I think that we have done a decent job of being as efficient as possible. I know one member of the, of the committee tonight said, the state numbers, we rely heavily on the state. I can almost guarantee that we're gonna get $120,000, maybe $130,000 in increased Chapter 70 money. Our budget's not gonna go up $360,000. It's gonna go up over $2 million, and there's gonna be an impact to the communities. I'm just guessing, and that's a, that's a 3% increase of the budget, or maybe 2.75%, but the state's only giving us 100 and a quarter. Now, there should be, there could be some other things that, that play into effect. I had another conversation with a member, and we are, I actually have a meeting internally, are low-income students. If we can appropriately tell the state how many low-income students we have, we might fall into a different bracket. I don't know how many we have, and there is no benchmark necessarily for that. The state has kind of taken that away. It used to be an application on free and reduced lunch. It's no longer there. So we have to actually seek out, make sure that our students are adequately categorized because it helps them and then it helps us. And it could be a significant increase, but that's a projection. When Representative Sullivan last year and, and a few other folks, when we passed FY25, we were talking about regional transportation, they remarked 90%, a 90% reimbursement rate. That is subject to appropriation by, by the governor's budget, and that changes. This year, we were okay. Last year, in, going at the end of FY24, we weren't so okay, and there was a deficit. So a lot of variables play into this, and there'll be conversations, and I'm open to conversations with, with the both boards of select, the select board and the selectmen in both communities, as well as the finance committee. But we are going to provide a budget that will effectively educate and move our students forward, maybe not at a, at a rabbit's pace, but we will provide what we feel the needs are for the students that we have in front of us and for the students that are entering the preschool next year and servicing the post grads that we have in, in district. It won't be bells and whistles, I don't believe, and we haven't talked, but I can just estimate we're, we're not going to be able to add multiple programs. We haven't talked about that in a while. We haven't talked about adding, we've talked about maintaining. And again, central office team briefly talks about maintaining and seeing where we're at and moving forward. We keep moving the needle forward. Post COVID, we're moving the needle forward. Kids are learning and kids are advancing. We want to maintain that, and that will be up to the school committee to affirm that to the communities prior to March 19th.
Now, this is not gonna be a budget discussion, so we're not gonna discuss the budget. We're just stating some facts, and that's what I wanted to come out. Now, one of our main jobs for us is the assessment, and other people cannot tell us what our assessment can be. That is our job. That is one of the few jobs that we have. So when I was raked over the coals, and I'm saying it personally, about not having certain information provided, it was because the assessment was set at two and a half. We cannot, that is not anybody else's purview to do that. It is our purview to set our assessment, which we will do, which we feel is the best for the students that are under our purview. And yes, we do work with the towns. We have no problem doing that. Sometimes it works out well, sometimes it does not. But it has to be equal on both sides, and it has to be equal from everybody. And, you know, so, and as chair, I was trying to do the best what I thought, you know, and we, when we ask for people, things to be on the agenda, if it is good for the students and good for the schools, then I absolutely have it on the agenda, as all of you know.
I don't want to talk about our budget in terms of, but I'm coming from the municipal finance part of it, and the flaws are in the municipal sides. The flaws and the systemic flaws to funding education are not in the educational side. We are low-hanging fruit that they, we do not, we are the best deal in Plymouth County, and you just can't really go lower. And it does have, I'm gonna just bring up MMA sort of discussions and points for when you have to do a two and a half override, something that they, both towns have been told that they have to do.
Yes, I know.
To meet, to meet this. But in that, in that discussion phase, in that checklist is really goals and objectives, quality schools and town services, and your ability to find revenue outside of taxation. So the, the call to action isn't to this school committee. The call to action is to, are you funding, finding those same grants and federal funding in the town level? Are you finding, are you, you know, doing fees correctly? And the call to action, are you taxing correctly throughout property value, all of your businesses and, and taxation? And then if, if you've met that criteria, then, then maybe you need to look at what, as your professional has said, what, what, how many years ago did they say they needed an override?
2019.
2019. Now, that's compounded. That is compounded.
Yep, and that was both towns. Both towns have received that. And both towns also asked for a five-year plan for, from our school, which we did.
Asking children to remedy your systemic problems in the town is wrong, and I will not entertain it. I won't entertain it.
Right, and we did give a five-year plan as we were asked, and those, for those of you who are new, we had a, one of the committees formed and did a five-year plan and with numbers. And the first year was this past year, and we were almost on the nose. Was what we had predicted and what we gave the two towns. So it was not a surprise, and anything should not have been a surprise because we were asked, we did what we said, what we were asked to do, and we were almost right on the note. It was really kind of strange that it was so, so.
Well, good with numbers.
Exactly. Just, just one thing, and I think, obviously, like, there's so much conversations that can and do happen around the budget, but I think that, like, the way that schools are funded, the mandates that are on schools, the, the non-negotiables that, that districts do not get to say no to are very different in, in the school system, especially in a regional school system than it is in other areas of town government. And so I think it's, well, obviously, we're the biggest part of the budget, which makes it sometimes a harder pill to swallow, but the reality is, there's, it's like, it's, you can't compare apples and oranges in the same way. So that's just my two cents on that.
Okay, so we just wanted to give our side a little bit, that, you know.
Thank you. I think equal conversation is what's being asked. Well, you know, when somebody's completely ignoring data, facts, what would be needed, and then asking for an equal conversation, well, that's just somebody talking.
Right, thank you.
And I think the purpose today is to just talk about the process.
Yeah, so, and we wanted, because we have new members. We wanted you to know what our process is gonna be, and it's a little more involved than just, sometimes it's a double meeting month. And it's not always happy conversation. It's happy with it.
I think, just one final thing, I think, just like, speaking as a relative and a member is not brand new anymore. I think that, like, let's move forward, and, and there are new members who are willing to participate in conversations with select boards and with finance committees, and, and I think that, like, as an overture of, like, saying yes, like, the door is open, you know?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Karen.
Did anybody go and attend Hanson's town meeting? A good, a good example to dishonest conversation is over $2 million tucked away in other budgets while you're telling the schools that you can't fund, or telling, not just the schools, telling your community, we can't fund our working families. That's disingenuous. And I think somebody even got up and said, you know where you tuck it away, essentially, somebody that's on finance committee. So I really think that a more honest conversation needs to start happening for the people who are projecting that there's no honest conversations. It needs to happen with the select.
And I think we need to be invited. I think, I think, I want to come around and Steve and Don and myself and Jeff. Three years ago, we had a meeting at Whitman Town Hall, and both select boards told us what they thought about what we were asking for, and we were trying to add services, something that our kids, you know, Don spoke with bilingual CCL and how we don't have foreign language, and every single member of both those boards got to say their piece, and we had to sit there in silence and listen to it all. And I think those same things are kind of happening, and we're not being invited to a table. When a budget discussion about the regional school district budget is asked to blackboard agenda, and no one from the school committee is invited or told the day it's happening, hey, by the way, that flies in the face of all these buzzwords that I've heard over the last three or four years. Transparency, collaboration, and I think it's really problematic, and we saw this last spring. And we, sitting here, need to do what's best for the kids who are in schools and what they need. And I'm happy, we went to our select board meetings last year and kept saying, we will talk to everybody, we will educate people. I don't always feel like we're invited to the table, and I think that, I don't know how, I mean, we're up there, but that's, that's, you know, my sort of people.
And sometimes when we're invited to the table, they, they don't want to hear our suggestions, so that's very, it's not a two-way conversation. Yes?
I'll be brief. Hillary just reminded me that, since we didn't have a voice, in the spirit of transparency, I went to a South Shore Vocational Regional Building Committee meeting because the towns of Whitman and Hanson, on January 25th, 2025, we're all gonna have a vote on a new South Shore vocational building that includes an expansion. Reason I went, and I did speak on camera, if anyone chooses to go back and look for that, they're supporting, and in the eight committee members of the towns are supporting an expansion of two new programs, plumbing and veterinary. I'm not gonna give my opinion on whether they're worthy or not. Yes, they are. However, we just heard our superintendent say, we're maintaining, we're maintaining. So that's transparency. You've got a, one regional school district public school in your town that's doing its best, and its staff is doing the best, and we're maintaining. And you've got another one who's advocating to increase programs.
Well, I can't, just a follow-up. So the laws don't change for these, we are both separate entities that do the same budget. One entitles the, these two towns to essentially bully up on only our children, you know, and say, hey, we're gonna restrict what you do. Because remember when they're talking about that overall funding for our schools, when we have that, those online breakouts? Those online breakouts include all educational funding. Matter of fact, some of that includes some of the police budget, some of that, if you understand how that breaks out. So essentially, what they're saying is, hey, Whitman, Hanson students, don't you dare grow as fast as the seven and a half percent, the seven and a half percent. You stay at 2%, and these kids can go to seven and a half percent. And that's a problem that we, you know, ultimately, we have to stay what our kids do. We should be expanding the programs to meet the, the world these children are going into. And, and this idea that you can't afford it, well, guess what? Our override capacity is at 50%. That's an indication that the towns actually can. There's math that goes along with this, guys, and they can run it out there, but actually, they can't afford it because the math says it. It's all on Desi.
Yeah. And I mean, you know, I have to say, you know, like, Sean is here, so we have somebody involved, which is my select board. Sean is here almost every meeting.
Yep.
Yeah, I said.
He's 40.
Yeah, him, so I see him over there. Sorry. And it's nice to have them come, you know, to our meetings and listen. So they're the ones who I have confidence in a little bit more that are listening to what we have to say. You know, and because sometimes we haven't had anybody here, and then we get the complaints, but nobody has been here to, you know, until we get the complaints. But moving on. Field trip approval for Whitman, Hanson Global Travel trip to Greece. Boy, I'd like to be on that one.
Motion to accept the WOHO travel, April 17, 2025, April 26, 2025.
Second. Okay, any questions? Okay, all in favor? Yes.
Can I just say on camera, as I say all the time, this is not school-funded. There is no taxpayer dollars that go to this trip. It's all self-funded by the students to pay for their trip.
And it's during, mostly during vacation.
Yeah, it's.
So, yeah, April vacation, so.
Yep.
You know, so. New business, we have a donation to Hanson Middle School from the Hanson Badminton Club. Says, dear Mr. Velvys, the Hanson Badminton Club would like to make a $2,500 donation to the Hanson Middle School Physical Education Department to be used to purchase supplies and equipment. We applaud the efforts of Mrs. Cliff. We applaud the efforts of Mrs. Clifford and Mr. Riley to provide meaningful and educational physical activity for their students. The donation signals our strong support for their professional mission. Hats off to the entire Whitman-Hanson Regional School Department, thank you for everything. Sincerely, Kevin Black.
Is this Coach Black?
Yeah, it is. Yeah, that's Coach, I was just going to say, yes.
$500 for the Hanson Middle School Phys. 8 Department.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous? Okay, do we have any public comment there, sir? Mr. Pharaoh, do we have any? Thank you. Yes?
Chair, may I just say one thing? And I'm sorry I didn't ask this, but we had our first, last Thursday, our first Holy Mary Cooperative Meeting.
Okay, I was going to put, I was, yeah, I was going to put it on your next one.
I was too swamped, but thank you.
I'll put it on the next one, okay? Yeah, because we'll do the building committee and the Whitman Middle Building and that next time. Okay, so that, we will have motion to go into executive session, and this has to be roll call, vote. Okay, so motion, please.
Do you want to read whole thing?
Yeah, you want, you want to read it?
Our motion to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of a public body, and the chair so declared, Unit A, B, C, and D.
Okay, and do we have a second?
Second.
Kara seconded. Okay, Stephanie?
Yes.
Kara? Rosemary?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
And, go ahead.
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Me, yes. Okay. We are in executive session, we will not be coming back to open session.